At the, at the higher engineer's estimate would have been about $120,000 for the city. So I do anticipate that our funding level will be much less than that because of the way the bids came in.
Okay, we will add this to our agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by six to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter in an agreement with Param Electric of Wadsworth, Ohio, for the purpose of providing materials and labor to replace a damaged light pole at Masucci Field in the amount not to exceed $16,981. Funding for this project will take in from Fund 233.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Foglio, second by Ms. Young. Any discussion?
Mr. President, just a, just a note that most of the expense of this will be absorbed by our insurance carrier. We did have insurance that covers this. There was a damaged light pole in a windstorm many months back at Masucci Ballpark. These are the lights that are actually light the field. So we have to replace a 70-foot pole, some of the wiring there, and then we're putting new LEDs on that pole rather than putting the old fixture back up there.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by six to zero vote.
The next one, as I explained to council in pre-council, is a permit to transfer a liquor license. And basically, I was just making sure that council was still on board with this project. It's a requesting permission to sign the request of a transfer of a state liquor permit to the East Side Drive-Thru located within the city of Ashtria Bula for economic development purposes. This is an economic development transfer from the Division of Liquor Control. Basically, the permit that the business, this is the former Moses property on the corner of East 42nd Street and State Road that we had discussed doing a drive-through at that location, East Side Drive-Thru LLC. They have purchased a liquor permit, but it's not from within the area. So in order for that liquor permit to come here, there needs to be an economic development reason, which obviously that business could not really exist without a liquor permit, or it could exist but on a very, very low level for what drive-ins, drive-throughs usually acquire there. So just wanted to make sure council is still on board with this because it is a new liquor permit going into that area, that you're still on board with it with a voice vote, and then I will sign the documents for the gentleman, and he can send these to the state.
Any questions or comments? All in favor of a voice vote of what would be called?
Just permission to sign.
Permission, okay. I didn't want to hear that term. Permission for the manager. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will do that by a six to zero vote.
Thank you. And lastly, with your consent, I would like to reappoint Trevor Sprague and Earl Tucker to the Parks and Recreation Board effective immediately, with both terms expiring May 21st, 2022.
Mr. President, do I have to move?
I don't think, you just do that, right?
Oh, I do need consent for that.
Oh, do you need consent?
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Let me double-check real quick.
I just thought that was something you could do. All right. Ms. Foglio will move?
Second.
Ms. Haynes will second? Do we need to, I don't?
I think it's, it's just a voice vote. Yeah, three appointed by the city manager with council approval, so it's just a voice vote.
So we don't need to add it to the agenda?
No, it's just a voice vote here.
Voice, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So we will support the manager's recommendations by a six to zero vote. Anything else, Mr. Timmoner?
Mr. President, that's all for my report.
Thank you. Mr. Solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am requesting a vote of council authorizing me to prepare proposed legislation for the next council meeting, which would implement administrative orders made by the court relative to certain court personnel.
So move?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosfick, second by Mr. Crawford. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, just to let you know, I am not voting yes on this. It's not because I, I want to be difficult, but it's just I want to send the message to the judge that we aren't going to put up with this anymore, and also that I support the employees of the city. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Foglio. Anybody else? Now, this is, this is a vote to add it to the agenda, so. All in favor?
No. This is, they have it drafted.
This is a vote to allow me to prepare it so you could put it on the agenda next meeting.
So this is the actual roll call then?
No, no. This is, this is a vote for, to authorize me to prepare legislation that you could add to the agenda next meeting.
Next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Franklin. I'm just brought it out there tonight. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Yes.
It's hard to tell. Everybody's got masks. We're gonna need flags, so it, we will. Mr. Franklin, you will draft that by a five to one vote.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Would council indulge me and excuse me at this point? I'm having some back pain tonight, and I'd like to go get some rest. All right, thank you.
Hope you're feeling better.
Mr. President, Mr. Franklin, before you leave, will you still be contacting the Ohio Supreme Court for the mediation? Is that part of that request of council, or no?
I'm, I'm gonna ask you if you would mind withdrawing that question at this point. We can discuss that
Okay.
outside of a public meeting.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Franklin. Ms. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm formally requesting an ordinance repealing in its entirety payroll ordinance number 2020-88 enacted on September 21st, 2020 for the purpose of authorizing compensation, salaries, and wages to employees of the city of Ashtria Bula and the Ashtria Bula City Health District.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the finance director's recommendation.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Foglio, second by Ms. Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a six to zero vote. Ms. Welch?
I'm formally requesting an ordinance authorizing compensation, salaries, and wages to employees of the city of Ashtria Bula and the Ashtria Bula City Health District.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the finance director's recommendation. Second.
Motion by Ms. Foglio, second by Ms. Haynes on the replacement. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that by a six to zero vote.
And lastly, I'm formally requesting an ordinance to make supplemental appropriations in the general police levy coronavirus relief, CDBG, housing code enforcement, JED 1 and JED 2 funds for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Ashtria Bula, state of Ohio, for the period January 1 through December 31st, 2020.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the finance director's recommendation.
Second.
Second by Ms., move by Ms. Foglio, second by Mr. Crawford. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that item by a six to zero vote. Anything else, Ms. Welch?
That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. Ms. Sensky, do you have anything for us?
If you were going to, as a council, appoint Mr. Kenneth Vanyo, he is currently on the Parks and Recreation Board and wants to continue his service.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Haynes?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Foglio to reappoint Mr. Ken Vanyo to the Park Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? He will be reappointed by a six to zero vote. And, and, oh, I'm sorry.
No, Mr. President, his term would expire then on May 21st, 2022, also like the others.
All right, thank you. And as we mentioned earlier in the meeting, if you were in that pre-council, we do have an opening on the Park Committee, so councilors or citizens, you may contact your council or you may contact Ms. Sensky if you are interested. Thank you. We will now have our committee reports, community development and economic development.
Yes, we met, and there were some changes presented to the committee by the community development and city manager Jim Timmoner. Changes to street vacation procedure. I think we all have a copy of that in front of us.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes, do you want me to quickly just review the, the changes in there?
Yeah, that would be really super.
Sure. So, so really, the, the biggest changes to this, there are two. One is, we had a lot of people that were nervous about asking for any kind of vacation of alleys or streets because the way that the ordinance reads as it stands today without this new legislation, it states that that person or persons would have to go out and pay for a survey and submit those to the city before any action can be taken. Well, there's a lot of hesitation if people don't know whether or not you're going to take action on that. So in this, under 119-01, under B, the second bullet there, it's not a bullet, but it's actually B, B2, basically states that after council enacts or votes on an ordinance allowing for a vacation or narrowing of a street or an alleyway, they have 90 days to submit a survey, at which time then the ordinance takes effect. Okay? So this also, we've had some issues where we've relaxed that before council has passed an ordinance, and then the persons never went and done, did a survey and never recorded it in Jefferson. So this will be a way that, yes, we can get an answer without them outlaying money, but then make sure that we have it done or the ordinance just goes away. The second is that because the Office of Planning and Community Development and our engineers, our engineering tech are involved in this, we would like the petition to start within the Planning and Community Development Department before it gets to council so that we can work its way through the Planning Commission first with their opinion, get that information to council, and then council can hold their meetings in according to the rest of the ordinance after we make sure that all the preliminary backstory is done. So that's really the two changes that were pertinent in this, in the ordinance. And we are, eventually, we'll bring to council similar changes to the zoning code, where it'll start in Planning and Community Development and then work its way through the, through the rest of the process.
And, and this needs to, we need a motion on this, correct?
Need a motion to draft the legislation. And it'll be a repeal and replace of 119, or I'm sorry, 919.
Does anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we do that.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Foglio. All in favor of having that legislation drafted?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So we would do that by a six to zero vote.
The second change that was presented was lakefront residential zoning. City Solicitor and Community Development are working on zoning changes. I think that's what you were referring to, that more changes are coming.
Yes. Well, that is, so there's gonna be a change to the process of how a rec, or how a request to zoning change happens. What you're speaking of is a zoning change to add another zoning district, lakefront, I can't remember what we called it in there, lakefront.
Residential zoning.
Residential zoning, to add that into our legislation.
And my understanding is, once we have that in writing, residents will be invited to public hearings to be a part of this process. The next thing was to require landlords to provide proof of insurance on rental properties. Steve Chase presented a picture of a half-burned-down house, which is in my ward, by the way. And at present, the city has no, no recourse to remove this ISOR structure. So they want to have proof of insurance before there's, people are allowed to occupy the property. Do you want to add anything to that, Jim?
No, so this is, this is rental insurance that we'd like to see on properties. Like, like you said, Ms. Haynes, we, we have an issue, and actually, this was the second one of a, of a, of a one owner, one landlord, that a house burned down, and on the second property, there is no claiming no funds to remove this structure now. The first one was removed. So this would be a way that, this would just be another check for us. We would, we would, when we issue the new, when we issue the rental permit to landlords, they would have to submit an accord sheet, a deck sheet that says the structure has insurance on it. If, if they don't provide that, if you were to change this ordinance to, to allow us to do that, then we would not issue rental permits.
So this, this, we need a motion on this as well.
I will move on requesting rental, rental insurance, requiring landlords to provide rental insurance.
Mr. President, I'll second that.
Who's second? Kelvin? Thank you. Kelvin, Mr. Crawford, any other discussion?
I, I just think it's necessary. I, I remember the other building that was half-burned down. I mean, if that's your neighbor, and you have a half-burned-down building, we had the grant money, but it was still years that it was up. It was horrible.
I don't, I mean, if you have property, why wouldn't you want to have it insured? I mean, I just, especially if you're gonna have people living there, I just, boy, that just make, would make me nervous. Any other discussion? All in favor of drafting a resolution?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed? We would do so by a six to zero vote.
Next is, and you had, you had already mentioned this, John, about the parks levy renewal. We have to bring that to a motion here as well. So that would be for the primary ballot, May 4th, 2021.
Mr. President, I'll make that motion.
Ms. Foglio moves?
I second.
Ms. Young will second. And, and we get about $300,000 a year for, maybe $280,000, $300,000 a year in the park levy money?
Uh, it's about right, yes.
Yeah. And so it's time that we renew that for the next five years. So all in, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will have a resolution drawn by a six to zero vote.
We are still working on a format presentation for new businesses. We haven't, we're not, we're not complete on, on that, but we do want to recognize new businesses when they come to Ashtria Bula. And then our next meeting is Tuesday, November 10th. We will have Patrick Hayward, Steve Sargent, Liz Penna, and the discussion will be renaming Station Avenue to the RW Shelby Avenue.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Yeah.
And, and my meeting was only one hour long. I just want to.
You got a minute?
Again.
But there is a, and I, I will have Ms. Sensky send it, she sent it to the committee, but to all councilors, a sample letter so that when a new business comes to town, somebody from council can go there, if it's in your ward, or the manager, or the president, somebody will go, give them a nice letter saying, "Welcome, we wish you well," and so on and so forth. So Ms. Sensky, you'll send that to everybody, and we could look it over.
I will share it.
Thank you. All right, we had a Finance and Personnel Committee meeting also?
Yes, we did. The Finance and Personnel Committee, Committee meeting was Friday, October 16th. We started with the Finance Director's Report, and the Finance Director reviewed the Statement of Cash Position Report as of September with the committee. She is optimistic the city will have substantial carryover into 2021 due to receiving the CARES Act fund. Thank God for the CARES Act fund. The city manager explained, oh, no, I'm sorry. On September 23rd, the Department of Treasury issued an update of how the CARES Act fund can be spent. They made 100% of police and fire department wages, and it, and related expenses can be considered substantially to fighting the coronavirus. Originally, they only accounted for 50%. She specifically addressed the Housing Code Enforcement Fund, 291, 2020 revenue was expected to be $40,000, but the $25 inspection fees could not be collected since the coronavirus kept the staff from inspecting the houses. Additionally, we also had an ordinance set up for a $2,000 fee limit per structure, for structures with 10 or more residential units. This amount adds up to about $30,000, $30,000 less revenue than years past for the department. The Finance Director went on to discuss Finance Department personnel. The Sanitation Administrative Assistant retired in May, leaving a vacancy in the department. The duties of the position have been absorbed by the Finance Department staff, creating a workload burden. The Finance Director generalized the accounting assistant job description to include the duties of the Sanitation Administrative Assistant, which will enable her to hire an additional staff member and cross-train the entire staff on departmental functions. The city manager then reported, in the payroll ordinance being requested at tonight's meeting, he made positions to the Sanitation, Public Works, Motor Maintenance, and Traffic Department as approved by Local 1197. In the departments, the city manager redefined the job descriptions, and he'll only be hiring one person and to do all those jobs. Further reporting on the CARES Act funding, the city manager explained, the current rule specifically, specified funds should be encumbered by November 15th and spent by December 30th. Lawmakers are attempting to shift the dates to the first quarter of 2021 or later, which will help us. He is researching mortgage and rental assistance and utilities assistance. Another CARES Act allowable expense is for turnout gear for the fire department. The outfits have a 10-year lifespan, and many are approaching end of use. CARES Act funds allow for two sets for each staff member. Demand for the gear is high and supplies are low. In new business, the committee requested the Assistant Finance Director, Human Resource Specialist, Mrs. Sheldon, or department heads to inform the, inform the council president whenever a city employee retires. This practice allows council to give recognition for an employee's years with the city. So I would like to bring a motion before council. Can I do that? Can I bring the motion before council? For a resolution for Marie Reineer, who retired from the probation department as chief probation officer after 45 years of service to the city.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Foglio, and a second by Ms. Haynes to recognize, have a resolution drawn that we will present to Ms. Reineer for 45 years?
45 years.
I, I do believe that is the only job she ever had.
It is. She came right out of high school. Yes, she did. Right out of high school.
All right.
So we will, there's a motion and a second to have a resolution drawn to honor her retirement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We would do so then by a six to zero vote.
Okay, and the last thing that we discussed was the city solicitor. The city solicitor is involved in an ongoing discussion about the municipal court and the budget issues. He explained the Ohio Supreme Court offers a free service to mediate disputes between any two units of government and recommends the parties involved to use this method to resolve the ongoing budgetary conflicts. The city solicitor explained the city of Ashtria Bula serves as host to the municipal court. They're two separate governments, governmental units. The city provides the facilities, payroll, and appropriates a lot of their budget, but the management of the court and their personnel decisions are entirely the responsibility of the court. In an October 7 communication, the municipal court judge agreed to the mediation offered through the Ohio Supreme Court. Most certainly cannot hurt. Until then, there are two ongoing issues needing swift attention. The first deals with the August 4 journal entry, giving two employees raises exclusively using the court's special projects fund. An administrative order was issued directing the August 4 journal entry be fulfilled. This step is a legal procedure in case she decides to file a petition for rid of mandamus. The second issue concerns William Neame's move to acting chief probation officer and his rate of pay for the new title. These are two journal entries related to this change. The first described by the city solicitor as a non-protonk entry that states that Mr. Neame's previous pay as chief probation officer slash deputy bailiff. The second is an amended judgment entry related to his move to acting chief probation officer slash deputy bailiff. The city solicitor advised the Finance and Personnel Committee to recommend mediation process. He explained the court's special project fund is supported by court costs and is solely under the judge's discretion. The court is not collecting the revenue originally projected. Therefore, the fund does not have sufficient monies to cover all the raises, raises the judge has ordered. The city solicitor is suggesting the city accept the latest administrative orders from the judge and attempt to comply with them and commit to the mediation for the 2021 budget. The city manager stated that there were three separate and different reasons stated for the raises ordered by the judge. Though he appreciates the city manager's effort, or the city solicitor's efforts, there have been many opportunities to meet and discuss the conflicts between the city and the court. And the city solicitor asked for the executive session at tonight's meeting. Our next Finance and Personnel Committee meeting will be November 20th at 8:00 a.m.
Thank you, Ms. Foglio. Any questions or comments?
Mr. President, just to expound a little bit on what Ms. Foglio talked about with our positions in the Finance Department, Public Works, and in Sanitation, I, you know, this is something that, especially Mrs. Welch and I do constantly when we have people that are retiring or moving on from positions. We always sit back and look, do we need to replace that position? Or is this something where we need help in other areas that we can divvy up work, saving money in the departments and, and spreading the love around, I guess you'd say, with, with some of the work that had to be done? When Ms. Hook, who is a long, long, longtime employee in the Sanitation Department, decided to retire, we basically had two assistant, or I'm sorry, two administrative assistants sitting within hundreds of feet of each other, one at Public Works and one at Sanitation. And I had said long before even Kathy was going to retire, I did not feel it was appropriate to replace both of those positions with, with some of the workload that was down there. So what we did was we modified the administrative assistant position in Public Works to absorb payroll and purchase orders from Sanitation so that we didn't have to hire another administrative assistant down there. We created a, a position at a much, at a lower pay than a administrative assistant of light equipment opposite, operator slash yard attendant, so that we could have somebody down there that was watching the yard, was able to work with the scales, to hopefully eliminate a lot of the times that we've had to close the gate because we haven't had personnel down there, and also answer phones. This is also a person that's kind of like a utility. If there's a shortage that day, if people are calling off, they can jump on a truck so we can make sure that the route is still picked up timely. And then with the position coming up here to Finance, they're gonna absorb the container billing and doing pay-ins and things like that for sanitation, plus other duties within wastewater billing and other duties within the city. So these moves and positions have actually saved money in departments and have not created any additional funds expended out in the general fund. So I just wanted to make sure that, that you're aware that when we do have retirements like this, I mean, obviously, some positions you just have to refill. But we're always looking out for, how do we make things more efficient and effective? How can we get, how can we justify, you know, more help in her office by dividing it over two different departments and still get all the work done? So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that.
Mr. President, and, and I'd like to let, let council know that in, in light of what we're going through with the judge, the way the manager is handling these two positions is the way it should be handled. Things should be compromised, put together, and run efficiently. That's what we're not seeing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crawford?
Public Works' next meeting is Monday, Monday, October 26th at 5:00 p.m. right here. I will miss that meeting. Ms. Harris will run that, as that is my 18th wedding anniversary that day.
Oh, very good.
So, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Is there a guest or anybody coming, or?
Mr. Timmoner?
Were you able to get?
I believe that Mr. Tolnar from GPD is coming.
He is.
Yes. From GPD, and we're gonna be discussing the plant evaluation proposal and system evaluation proposal for the wastewater treatment plant.
All right, thank you. And happy anniversary early.
Thank you.
Mr. Spielman?
Safety Forces is going to meet Monday, October 26th at 8:00 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman. So this evening, we're going to move on to our legislative part of our agenda. We have several items. 2096, a payroll ordinance to repeal. 2097 is the replacement. 2098 is the supplemental appropriations. 2099, a contract for an electric pole replacement. And 2100 is the Pepman resurfacing project. Am I missing anything? We didn't add anything tonight?
Nope.
Okay. So those will be the items that we would be discussing, or voting on. Is there a desire by council to handle those in consent agenda format?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Foglio?
Second.
Second by Mr. Crawford. We will handle those items and consent agenda. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will do so then by a six to zero vote. Ms. Sensky, will you read the legislation to us?
Ordinance number 2020-96, an ordinance repealing in its entirety payroll ordinance number 2020-88 enacted on September 21st, 2020, for the purpose of authorizing compensation, salaries, and wages to employees of the city of Ashtria Bula and the Ashtria Bula City Health District. Ordinance number 2020-97, an ordinance authorizing compensation, salaries, and wages to employees of the city of Ashtria Bula and the Ashtria Bula City Health District. Ordinance number 2020-98, an ordinance to make supplemental appropriations in the general police levy, coronavirus relief, CDBG, housing code enforcement, JED I and JED II funds for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Ashtria Bula, state of Ohio, for the period January 1 through December 31st, 2020. Ordinance number 2020-99, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Param Electric Incorporated for materials and labor for the replacement of a damaged light pole at Missouche Field. And ordinance number 2020-100, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Perk Company Incorporated in the amount of $809,642.60 for the Pepman resurfacing project.
I will move, I will move that we waive the reading of those legislative items?
Second.
And a second by Mrs. Foglio. Uh-oh. Any discussion on waiving the reading? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading by a six to zero vote. I will make a motion to waive the charter requirements of two readings of the legislation?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Foglio. Any discussion? Will you please call the roll on waiving two readings?
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes. And on, on the passage of the legislation itself?
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes. So all those items have passed by a six to zero vote, which means they can take place effectively, immediately. Is there any other items that we need to discuss, Ms. Sensky?
I, no, I don't believe so.
Okay. I'll just check. All right. At this time of the night, we will have new business. Tell us something we don't know. Does anybody have any ideas for us this evening?
I do.
Considering this is voting season, I'd like to remind everybody that if they're casting their ballot, you have to put two stamps on the envelope in order for it to go. There's only room for one stamp, but you have to put two. And, Mr. Manager, the, the nets are up at the tennis court, and they look very good. Very nicely done.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes?
The nets came in Friday. The company came back and installed those on Friday. So now we are, we have asked for bids from a couple of local tree companies to trim the trees way back on the courts. We know we're always going to have leaves on the court, but to make sure that the little fine branches and other particles aren't falling on the courts. The guys are out there trying to keep as, as many of the leaves off there. But as you know, if you're picking them up in your yard, as soon as you get rid of them in the fall, but we'll make sure it's all cleaned up before the winter time, so there's no staining or mold on there. And then, we're not sure if we're going to be able to get those trees done this fall, only because that new seeded area, we don't want to tear up that, the grass and everything. One of the companies has offered to put down plywood. We may or may not wait till next, till the springtime to do that. Once the leaves and everything are down, and obviously, people won't be playing in the winter time, I don't think we'll have an issue, but definitely on our agenda to get that all trimmed up.
Can I ask a que, so when will the tennis courts be open?
If you want to go play right now, we can.
Great.
I think, we even got the light system, the old light system there working, and I want to say we leave the lights on until 10 o'clock. I think they come on at 6:00, so.
Perfect. Nice.
You'll have to bring me a racket, though. I don't have a racket.
Well, what, how many councilors? We, there's seven of us, so we could have three double teams, and.
Don't forget the pickleball.
Somebody from the other end of the day.
Don't, don't forget pickleball.
Pickleball. How many people play pickleball? Two?
Oh, you can play with four. It's fun.
Oh, all right.
Oh, we could do that. Kind of.
All right. We could do that, too. All right. We'll have a council tournament.
Kind of a big deal with pickleball.
And I'm glad Ms. Foglio mentioned about voting. I was going to mention voting. It's going on right now, but if you are going to mail it, you have to have two stamps. So I'm glad you mentioned that also. Anybody else have anything they'd like to share?
I do.
Thank you.
So this, this is something that I copied on Facebook. It was someone else's post, and it's titled, "This Christmas." This Christmas, buy from local, buy handmade, buy from people you know, buy from self-employed. Remember, big stores don't do a little jig when they make a sale. Make someone jig this year.
Nice.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. That's a good idea. And, and I imagine we'll be hearing soon about the shop local thing on Bridge Street and Main Street, so that's a good early warning.
Well, I always say, shop at the stores you want to keep.
Anybody else?
I, yeah, I got something. So last week, what day was it that we gave that resolution to the?
Monday.
Monday.
Monday. I can't, I don't even know what day it is. Last Monday, we, several members of council went to the Lakeside Football Team's practice at the end of their practice and presented, probably, oh, jeez, it was close to a dozen kids, a resolution thanking them for helping out youth opportunities down here on Main Avenue with, with different cleanup. So it was cool to get to go out there and get, give that resolution to those kids because they worked hard and they, they deserved to be recognized. So it was nice to see them. They seemed pretty excited about it, so it was cool. So we did that a week ago. And it was awesome.
Mr. President, may I add something?
Yeah.
Mr. Spielman did a wonderful job of reading the resolution to the kids. Did a good job.
Good. Thank you for doing it. And, and it, maybe, because then they won their football game on Friday, too, so that might.
Yeah. That was, that was the speech that Jim gave.
My daughter goes to Edgewood, so.
All right. So anything, only other thing, reminder, because it will be, our next meeting will be after Halloween, so that is the 31st at 4:00 to 6:00. Right? 4:00 to 6:00?
That's correct, Mr. President. And on the city's website, underneath, I believe I put it underneath the Health Department. If you haven't noticed yet, we did update the city's website, so it's a lot easier to navigate. But under the, no, that's not where I put it. Hang on a second. It's actually under the COVID-19 residential update, so it actually, it is in the Health Department. If you go to the Health Department, and then there's a big red button that says, latest COVID updates, you will see there the trick-or-treat guidelines are posted. So those are the guidelines that were established by our Health Department, the Conneot Health Department, and the County Health Department. They all got together and said, hey, if we're going to have this throughout the county, let's try to have everybody doing the same thing. So we, we, of course, decided to take their advice and, and do that. So just a couple, a few things. First off, if you don't want to participate, you know, again, don't, don't feel like you have to. If, if, if you have any type of symptoms, if you are concerned about anything like that, please, you know, just, just don't partake in it. If you do go out, make sure you have a facial covering going door-to-door, and that's on top of any kind of mask that comes with the costume. And for those that are handing out candy from your homes, you know, I would suggest you do it more outside in the driveway or on the sidewalk outside of your home, please make sure you have a mask on and gloves, and don't allow people to grab candy from a common bowl. Just hand out the pieces of candy to the children that are, that are coming up. As always, you know, it does get busy during those times, so if you're driving around, please be cautious of kids and parents going door-to-door. Families that go out, we ask you not to congregate with other families. Try to keep your unit together, those that you live with, and try to maintain six-foot distance. We know there's some discrepancy between people who think we should be participating in this and think we should not. Thankfully, the county is, I think, doing well right now as far as our numbers go. However, we are seeing in Ohio spikes. So again, I think if you just heed the warnings that are on there and the guidance that's on there from our health departments, also with the CDC and the Ohio Health Department, I, I think we'll be okay. But again, if you have any hesitation, don't, don't feel like you're, you're obligated to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Timmerman. And I do know, one resident in the city made a pipe thing from, from her porch to the candy.
Yep. Yep.
So I, I ordered a drone, so I'm going to. Candy out. No, I don't know anything. All right. Anybody else have anything for, tell us something we don't know? Our next council meeting will be Monday, November 2nd. Pre-council will start at 6:30 again, if that's okay with everybody? And keeping in mind, everybody stay safe. We are orange, so let's get back to yellow. And so that'll be the end of our meeting. The meeting is adjourned.